Welcome everyone to the August 20th Select Board meeting. This meeting is being called to order at 6:37. This is an unusual meeting. This is a meeting that we do now, it's an annual meeting. This is the meeting at which we review and discuss the draft of the Town Manager's Performance Evaluation. That's the only thing we're going to be doing tonight, plus one agenda item for a license, or two, one or two licenses, however many we have. But the only thing we're going to be really discussing in detail tonight is the Town Manager Evaluation. So I want to warn folks at home that this makes for very, very, very not interesting television. Because what we're going to start with doing is reviewing documents. We're going to have something like 40 pages of documents to read. It makes for a really very exciting meeting to watch, but then we'll discuss them. The reason this is the only thing on our agenda tonight is because this is really the most important thing that the Select Board does. Not only does this provide critical feedback to the Town Manager, gives him direction and guidance, it also helps the public to know how well our individual and collective priorities for the management of the town, how well they're aligned with the community. So this really is a critical task for us. So first let me step back to what got us here. In sort of the larger picture, we have over the course of the summer been conducting the performance evaluation in different steps. We've talked about the various documents, we got all of our ducks in a row, we solicited public and staff comment throughout the month of July. And then, once we had all of the public and staff comment in, we all worked individually on our own evaluation forms. Last week, everyone got those into me. So I am the only person who has read everyone's evaluation forms. I should note, Mr. Hayden was not able to get his in last week, and he has provided his today. So that is on the desk in front of you. I'll be giving you the whole rest of the packets in a moment. So what I've spent the last several days doing, as has been our practice the last couple of years, is I have been trying to capture the spirit and the details of everyone's individual evaluation forms and put those into a composite draft. It is a composite because the Select Board has no individual authority, as we all know. We only have authority when we speak with one voice, which is to say at least a majority of us are saying something. And so our individual forms don't have any individual authority or guidance really for the Town Manager. It's only the composite document where we are speaking with a single voice. So I have tried very hard, as I said, to capture all of the details, where we have spoken similarly. As our evaluation form is complicated, as we all know, it's got about 27 questions on it. We all interpret those questions a little bit differently. We all put different categories of items into the different answers of different questions. But I try and synthesize all of that and put that together into a draft memo and a composite of our evaluation form. I try to take no liberties whatsoever. I'm not making any assumptions about anything. So I have not included something unless it has direct reference in three or more of the evaluation forms. So it's really important, what we're going to be doing now is making sure that there are not other things that we might all agree on, or three or more of us might agree on, that we want included in the memo. Because individuals of us thought about it, it occurred to us, but it didn't occur to the others of us as we were filling out the form. But as we discuss it, we would say, yes, we want that included. Because the goal here is to make the evaluation as complete as possible, both for the areas that we think are great strengths and for the areas that might benefit from more attention. So I want to thank, first of all, all of the public and the staff who offered comment to us on this. The Select Board's individual evaluations are really made up of a collection of our personal observations over the course of a year, as well as the informal feedback all of us receive constantly. And the formal feedback period that I talked about with the public and the staff comment. So we had a pretty good response to both of those, and I just want to express our appreciation for that, because it really does help to inform us. Also, I want to thank the Select Board for doing an incredibly thoughtful and careful job with these. I know that, like me, you probably hate this. This is really, it's complicated, it's, you want to be very honest, you want to be very clear, you want to be very helpful. And the public nature of an evaluation is very awkward, and so I also want to thank Mr. Musanti for being an incredibly good sport about this. Because it is difficult, but at the same time, he recognizes and appreciates that this is all about our helping to further improve his great leadership of the town. So let me summarize that this is, again, an incredibly positive evaluation, no surprise there. Overall, this is an excellent review with a great appreciation for Mr. Musanti's work, once again. We have identified some areas that would benefit from more attention in the coming years to help further your management and leadership skills, and we look forward to kind of talking about those with you. So without further ado, I think, I am going to pass out all of the documents. I will note, this is important explanation for folks at home, the reason that you haven't seen these yet is because the new open meeting law, as revised in 2010, a year when I was paying particular attention to the open meeting law as it relates to the Town Manager Evaluation, they made a change that does not allow for documents that express an opinion that are created by the board members themselves to be distributed ahead of time. So there's always gray area, interpretive area there about what constitutes an opinion or not, but basically anything that would be substantively influencing the others in our body isn't supposed to happen outside of meetings. So since there's nothing more important that we do than the Town Manager Evaluation, this is, as of yet, the best way we can find to do this. So, oh, and the other thing I wanted to note about that is Debra Rousseau in the office, bless her heart, to accommodate this, as well as the people who are watching at home, put these up on the website and just published them at home, from home, at 6:30. So they have not been available to anybody before that, but now they are available to everybody on the website. So anybody who's interested, as we sit here and read these for really the next 30, 40 minutes, however long it takes before our discussion starts, they are welcome to read along at home. So I'm going to pass these out now. And remember that this is the draft memo, which comprises really the guts of the evaluation, is a rough draft that is ours to add to, subtract from, and revise tonight. Because the goal here is to make sure that that memo includes everything that we want to include, make notes as you go along. I would suggest that you start with the draft memo, and then you read all of the individual forms. As you go through the forms, if you note anything that you say, wow, that's a great concept, I wish I had included that, I wish that had ended up in the draft memo, make a note of it, or, you know, mark it in some way. You're going to have a whole bunch of pages in front of you, it will be difficult to just sort of find later if you don't mark it. Don't ask me how I know this. So, yeah, so go through, think about the things that perhaps didn't get included and should get included, and remember, I really was trying not to make any assumptions, so make sure that the things you want included are in fact in the memo. And at the end, we will talk about all those things that still need to be included. Because I have had a lot more time to sort of synthesize these than you have. I have a couple of areas that I'm going to recommend that we talk about that aren't included, that I think we should talk more about, and I look forward to all the ones that you will have. So I'll stop talking now, I will hand these out, and, oh, and so Mr. Hayden's you have on your desk right now. Mr. Hayden's, because I didn't receive it until today, it is not included in either the numerical or sort of the spiritual draft of this memo so far. I have read it just quickly, it doesn't deviate significantly from any things, it will not be difficult to incorporate those answers into the memo. So where the memo says, you know, it involves four of the five Select Board members' responses, I can change all that to five, and I can redo the numerical percentages on the composite form. Okay. So I've got... Does everybody have, does anybody have anything that says "me" on the front? You don't want anything that says "me" on the front. So I've given out four packets or five packets? Everybody has their packets with everybody?
This is a...
Yours have the front page with the memo on it?
Yes, S O S is what identifies the spirit.
Okay.
This is the calculation.
Yeah. All right. So if anybody's missing a piece, let me know. Then I have two for the press. And I think that's everything. So now, read at your leisure, no hurry. Like I said, this will be 30 or 40 minutes probably, and then we will talk about it. Thank you very much.
We got about a year and a half ago. I don't know if it was Excel spreadsheet or picture or something. Okay, I'll look for it.
Okay.
Just checking in, how are we doing?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, you got it? Take your time.
Crow reading.
No, it's important, so we have to all feel like we've had enough time to do this, so I don't want to rush anybody at all. Would you like a few more minutes? Okay. Years ago, when they made the John Grisham book The Firm into a movie, I always remember the movie review talked about furious photocopying. And that's what this meeting feels like, furious memo reading. Okay, so something I should have noted at the beginning is that I did preview all of this stuff with Mr. Musanti on Friday, so he and I have talked about it, he's read through everything. So there are no surprises here at anything we're talking about now. First of all, I hope that you think that the draft memo captures the spirit of what we did here. You know, I want to keep fine tuning the specifics, but make sure that we're starting in a good place. So I see nodding, so that's good. Okay, so I will, so that you guys can keep thinking about it, but also, as I said, because I've gotten to think a lot more about this than you have, I'll start off with a couple of areas that I wanted us to clarify a bit. And one of them is the issue about voting and advocacy at town meeting. This is something we had some comments on, we had comments on them last year also. Last year, we came out very strongly in support of Mr. Musanti voting and speaking, advocating for his positions at town meeting. Because we thought that was important. This year, that was noted on a couple of forms, but it wasn't noted on a majority of them. So again, I want to clarify, all of them noted his right, his undisputed right to vote and to speak at town meeting. But that's not the same as whether we're encouraging him to do it or not, and I would think that it would be helpful to him to have we, as his supervising body, come out strongly as far as what our position is on that. So again, we did come out strongly for that last time, so I'd like some comments from folks about that. Ms. Burr, please speak into your mic.
I made it quite clear in my comments on my form. That, you know, if people don't like it, we should change the Amherst Town Government Act, because that is how it is. And I'm fully in support, and I liked that you included that statement here. I think, if anything, what might need some clarification is not whether or not we support his right under the Town Government Act to do so, and not whether or not we support his right to advocate for his positions. I think some other things kind of muddied the water that caused people to then call the whole thing into question. And based on the comments that we got both throughout the past year and also from individuals. And one is associated with the amount of time that he speaks, which I think is simply a clarification that needs to be done with the TMCC, as we said when we asked you to forward us our position, our questions and comments about, you know, sort of the town meeting debrief to the TMCC, because I think that's something that basically just the whole community needs to be clear on. I think there's been confusion, and we discussed it at the time at the Select Board meeting, that there's been confusion as to, you know, what's an employee answering a question, and therefore is that subject to three minutes? Or is, he asks now in his case, is he answering a question and advocating, and so then does that stray into the three minutes? Or like, does he get unlimited time to answer the factual question and then get to do? So I mean, I think that's where, you know, some people started feeling like, he's taking all the time he wants. It's like, no, he's just answering the, oh, okay, I can see where you could say, okay, he's answering the question and he's adding a little editorial to it. So I think that it's just a matter of all having the same shared expectation. And I think that there are people who not only, one, don't like the Town Government Act that says he can advocate for his position, but two, expect that any time any human being speaks on the floor of town meeting, it will only be for three minutes. Well, that hasn't always been true for any employees that we've ever done that to. I mean, through the time I've been in town meeting, and even for things like the Select Board. I mean, the Select Board will say, hey, wait, Mr. Moderator, we could clarify that. And he doesn't say, okay, no, you have three minutes. He just lets us clarify it. So I think that it's just brought out that bigger question, and I really hope that we would not focus it as being, you know, a problem of his as being, it just was indicative of a larger problem that we had associated with that. And maybe, Mr. Walters, somebody can clarify that better later.
Okay, so if I can summarize. So your comments come out very strongly, as do mine, in favor of him advocating for a position at town meeting that he both can, but more should.
Right.
So you're saying there's this other issue about timing, and so.
That's really a separate issue that shouldn't be muddied into whether or not he's allowed to speak, because he spoke in a way that was too long to sit.
Right, so we're not going to come out with a position, I don't think, on whether or not he should be subject to the same time limits as everybody else. But I appreciate you're making that point. But so far, we've got, you're saying that he should, that we want him to be able to speak. It's important to understand what he thinks and what he's pushing for. And then there's the timing issue, that's separate.
And I guess my point is to my colleagues and to the public, that if the timing issue is an issue, which I think it is, then that needs to be dealt with separately of our statement associated over here. And then the other thing that's also sort of adjunct to that whole issue was the mention in both one of our comments and in some feedback we got from the public about the zoning threshold of two-thirds of majority, which I know, you know, everything is what you're used to, but two-thirds in Massachusetts has been something that people, many people in Massachusetts with very good intent have been trying to turn over for many, many, many years. And so the idea that if we changed from two-thirds to majority, that would make us foolish or inappropriate or anything like that, I find very offensive when most of the country, as I understand it, does not have a two-thirds threshold. And secondly, many good-hearted people in Massachusetts have tried to change that as well. So although the comment, you know, can be placed in some context associated with, you know, anybody can say anything at town meeting, and I've certainly said way more uncomfortable things than that at town meeting. I think I would caution the public who's concerned about that statement, and even my fellow colleagues, that, I mean, it is a matter of opinion, it is a relative situation in that, as I said, there's been work for years for people to try and improve zoning regulations in Massachusetts in the context of, is there a way? in the context of, is there a way to protect public rights and not have it be a two-thirds threshold, rather than just, ah, let's just get rid of it so that a majority works? And of course, we don't want to be like most other people that have just majority rules. But I don't want, again, that to muddy up whether or not he's allowed to talk at town meeting.
Okay. All right, other thoughts in general and specific about this, Mr. Hayden and then Mr. Walters?
Yeah, I want to lend my voice to the chorus of support, having a town manager speak. And I'm going to maybe pull away from the word advocacy. Clearly, that's often involved appropriately. But the reason I think it's important is that, is for the same reason that I think it's important that the Finance Committee get to speak in advocacy of their budget. It's important for the Library Trustees to speak in advocacy of their, whatever their position is, and often it's a budget. Or the Planning Board, or, you know, go right down the list of people who get up in town meeting and speak in advocacy for something. We rely, I rely on John to stay abreast at a much greater detail and maybe even with greater knowledge on a whole host of things. And that's what I want town meeting to have access to. Not necessarily my opinion, but sort of intelligent, the intelligence, the fullness that the town manager can and often does bring to a discussion.
Mr. Wald.
In order of decreasing triviality. With regard to the timing issue, I just wanted to point out also, for the benefit of the viewing audience, that unless I'm very mistaken, we don't have a timer we can see easily there. So for example, we're sitting at our desks, and the timer's behind us, and the town moderator is keeping track of the time. Or the audience, the other town meeting members, will see the lights and the clock, but we don't. So if people want us to stick to a strict time limit, somebody has to enforce it, or they have to give us a means to see what time it actually is. So it's very easy to go over time, and the moderator tends to err on the side of the judgment call, sometimes allowing people to stray if they're finishing up a comment. That's just by way of context. And as far as a two-thirds thing, only because it became an issue here, I did not hear the town manager saying we should change Massachusetts law. I heard the town manager saying that by most standards, a two-thirds vote minus one would be a very strong endorsement, but we have this higher threshold. And it's been noted subsequently that there are other thresholds in other communities. But I didn't see him complaining about the procedure in town meeting. I thought him trying to, I saw him trying to assess the support for a given measure. And then finally, to the most important, I thought I came up in favor of the advocacy, and if not, I'll do it here. You know, my point was, aside from the fact that the town manager is entitled to vote, it would be peculiar for him to pretend he has no position, since these things are developed by consensus. We talked so much about the partnership with the town manager, how he informs us. And we're the chief executives, so we oversee the town in the political sense. But he's the chief executive administrator, or like a chief financial officer, plus an executive rolled into one, along with Mr. Puller. So they're the ones who are implementing policy. And policies that they have to discuss with us and that they have to put into practice. So it seems sensible that they would be able to advocate for those policies. I would in fact like to know if he could not support a policy that we're trying to support by a vote of 51% or 66.7%. So obviously, there are some sensitivities involved, and so it's important that everyone understand why these things are being done, and it's not manipulative or aggressive or whatever. But I think the principle of the vote is very clear, and the vote and the voice, I should say.
Thank you very much. Ms. Stein, would you like to comment on that?
I did state in my evaluation that I thought it was John's right to advocate and to vote. But that perhaps keeping his remarks a little tighter might be a good thing, since timing seemed to annoy me.
So to clarify, do you want to go so far as to say you encourage that, or just that you support that it's his right?
Either way, I mean, I'm happy, I don't have strong feelings about it. I certainly think it's within his right, and that's good enough for me. I think he's following what he feels is his rights, and that's fine.
Okay, all right, so I think we're at least very strongly majority in favor of not just supporting, but encouraging, like, we don't want you to stop voting or advocating. And so Ms. Stein is saying she doesn't feel quite as strongly as that, but it's all, it's full support for sure, and very strong encouragement. Okay.
Certainly don't feel he should stop doing it.
Okay, I think we're all on the same page there. Okay, I don't want to get sidetracked then. So we'll, I can reference the timing issue as a problem. The zoning issue, I personally agree 100% with Mr. Wald's interpretation of what happened there, and that it was misunderstood by some. So I don't think he was advocating, I don't want to be speaking here, but I also don't want to get sidetracked in that word zoning issue, do you want to comment?
You let him speak at a town meeting.
Well, first on the detail of that particular point, the point I was trying to express, perhaps not as effective as, effectively as I could have, was that there was very strong support within town meeting for the zoning measures. That was not meant to say that I was suggesting that the rules be changed. I also appreciate the feedback, again, from the community and also the Select Board about the participation in town meeting, ultimately, after lots of deliberation, really, two years ago now, coming into this position, and then throughout. I just think fundamentally, it's important for the community in town meeting to know my thoughts on a particular policy matter before them, while trying to be fully cognizant of my role as town manager, that one of my many duties is to help facilitate a smooth, functioning town meeting in the whole run-up to town meeting, the preparation, the preparation of the warrant, the formal and informal coaching that inevitably goes on with citizens submitting petition articles, et cetera, about appropriate procedures. So I'm trying very much to stay conscious of that and not have me taking a position on a given issue cloud that we're trying to, you know, perform that support role for town meeting in a professional and inclusive way.
Thank you very much. Okay, next issue, I wanted a little clarification on, which is question 13 and goal number nine. This is the one about the staffing plan. And the way that I had summarized our comments and ratings were that perhaps we were not ourselves sufficiently clear on what our expectations were for that. I was a little bit surprised by our collective comments on rankings, comments and rankings about that, because I thought that we had been clear. I thought that we had, particularly in discussing performance goals for next year, when we were having this discussion, talking about, that we were expecting really something that ends up being a written document, something that is not just sort of comments in a budget that you need to kind of infer, but that's a written plan. So I'm not sure if our comments were various degrees of trying to be diplomatic and not say, you haven't given us that staffing plan yet, or if we do indeed need further clarification on this. So the question is, is this a fulfilled goal or an unfulfilled goal? Or is this a goal that we keep needing to talk about for the future? So a couple of us put it as an unfulfilled goal, and a couple of us put it as, you know, anybody who had something that was other than needs improvement or unable to judge, if you'd like to weigh in on what your thoughts were about that particular question. Again, that was question 13, goal number nine. Mr. Hayden.
I, I'm one of the unable to judges. The, am I the only one, maybe? No, there were two of us. And the reason I say that is because I can't think of a place to go where I could say, oh, here is what the request is, or the suggested requirement is for this department, or that division, or that function, or whatever. I mean, I have a very, I have a sense, good or bad, I do have a sense of what the goals are. But I couldn't put my finger on the one thing. And I'm at the unable to judge phase, because when we were introduced to Deborah, Deborah, this is going to be difficult, that was one of the tasks that was mentioned as being set to her. So I'm waiting for that, for her interaction with Mr. Musanti and figuring that out, what that's going to be.
Okay, so I would say unable to judge or needs improvement. Anything that suggests that the goal was unfulfilled is, to me, makes sense with what I thought our expectation was. So anybody who put satisfactory or commendable or anything like that, if you wanted to speak about what you thought. Mr. Wald.
Ms. Brewer, I think was first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, with that clarification.
Yeah, it was a judgment call, so probably I would have put down unable to judge. I guess my reasoning was that there were a number of important changes in staffing. New Human Resources Director, new person in Planning Department, lots of things going on. Mr. Musanti coming back from medical leave. Under the circumstances, I assumed that the work was going on, but we hadn't yet seen it, so I'd also have a judgment call. But it was my understanding we would get a formal plan at some point.
Okay.
So I guess I was rating presumed progress, but the plan was not...
Okay, or under the circumstances that it was not unreasonable, that it wasn't fulfilled, but that it wasn't fulfilled.
Because I imagine it's much easier to discuss planning when you've got your personnel in place at the tops of those departments or at the key second-tier levels.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer.
What I wanted to say that I just thought was ever so valuable is that I actually thought what you had said, given then what I read of everybody's thing, made total sense. Like, we're all over the place on this, and so we need to work on this a little more. And reflecting back to, and Ms. Stein did a perfect thing of that, she marked it XX. So I think that what you said earlier, though, was that, well, since we had this conversation about the FY13 goals, I think actually, between the time of the end of FY12 and the discussion we had about the FY13 goals, I think we're clearer on what we expect FY13 to look like. But that couldn't be reflected here, because it wasn't FY12. So in FY12, it was still kind of all over the place. I think that we should probably revisit it before we get too far along in FY13. But I think we now all better understand, having had that conversation associated with goals, and having looked at this and see where we all end up, what we all think that means, and we can obviously have a separate conversation, maybe as a very short agenda item at some point. What was it you meant about that again? Our notes indicate that. So that we will be able to effectively look at that next year. But I think that for FY12, although it was very clear to some of us what we thought it was, it wasn't very clear to all of us. And so this is reflecting those moments in time.
Okay, so we're pretty good with the fact that, how it's presented, it's...
Thought you captured.
We haven't, we haven't fully worked it out, so, okay. So I, did you have any other comment?
No, I think Alyssa explained my point of view. I thought the hires had been great, and the fact is, we haven't seen a plan with cost estimates, et cetera.
Okay. Okay, all right, so I think I might be able to tweak that just a tad more, but that we've got the concept and the spirit of that. Okay, next one. Question 25, which is goal number three. Part of that was about gathering info on strengths and weaknesses of service delivery. This is one that has been on there for a couple of years, and last year, we specifically noted it as one of the areas that needed some improvement. That, again, we were kind of looking for, like, some list, something concrete, not just, you know, we always want to hear about how service delivery is, but actual steps that were taken to to try and collect feedback from the public about service delivery. So we had noted that last year. Only one or two of us noted that this year, so again, I'm wondering if we felt like we needed to clarify what our expectations are there, or that we are, that it's difficult to answer these questions and kind of get at every nuance of it. So my question to you is, is this, does this need additional wording? Is this something that has or has not been fulfilled in a way that needs to be reflected in the evaluation? Because at this point, it is essentially not there. Last year, it was noted for improvement. Mr. Wald.
I guess, I mean, maybe it's the gather information that's particularly vague, because you could just ask people to tell, you know, how are we doing? Or you could do, you could implement more formal mechanism, technological or others. So maybe we should be more clear about what sort of data we're looking for and what means of solicitation and delivery.
So Mr. Wald was saying more clarity for next year, to sort of leave it unrated at this point, but look for more clarity.
Because we get questions about things like the work on the street, or is a parking, what's different with parking violation, the parking fine, you know, things that are... People may have different expectations of the level of information they should have, or the timeliness of information. So I mean, the first thing I think we can do is to clarify what we think we should be doing in giving information to the public and making the public aware of the means that we have for putting things out and getting feedback back from them. But I think in particular, the feedback is, we could make clear what we want there.
Okay, others, Mr. Hayden.
Yeah, and maybe part of that, the clarity, a lot of reports, you know, across our desk, and they're often not somehow or other cohesive with this one goal. We saw the paving report, and okay, that went off. And several months earlier, we had a little report on the number of potholes, the number of yards of asphalt that had been used in potholes that month or the two months beforehand. I can't remember the exact date. And sometime before that, there was a streetlight survey, you know, so all of these little bits and pieces. I can't help but to notice that this month's edition of the Pioneer Institute's Guide to Successful Municipal Governments includes a whole chapter on how that data is collected and, you know, what pieces of that are valuable to clump together. So that is a tough one, and there is a lot that goes on. And I, so I'm looking forward to resolving the challenge of making that accessible. I might, just as an aside, mention that if there had been, if there is a system that exists to sort of collect all that stuff easily and create an easy point of access to it, we might have had fewer phone calls going on during the snowstorm. I mean, if somebody could access, oh, yeah, we know where the crews are, we know, you know, where the utility companies are headed, we, you know, we have a sense of that. So I mean, that turns out, on my reflection, to be kind of a significant goal, important, but also big.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Stein or Ms. Brewer?
I was going to see if Diana would have talked, because you know I'm a... The reason I marked that satisfactory is because I've been looking at it as, yep, things are going along, there's information about town successes and challenges out there, there's support, there's seeking of support. The gathering of information issue is not done yet in some formalized way, but it's not done in a bad, formalized way, which I'm happy about. It's not based on some suggestion box, which is really not the way to go. It's not based on some expensive, let's hire somebody to do a survey of something that's useless. It's, I think it's the more that I'm saying satisfactory, and someday it would be commendable if somebody came up with an interesting initiative as to how we might more effectively do that. And I'm also totally open to including things under that goal, in terms of, like, when the town manager does a self-evaluation of saying, so when it came to the storm response, one of the things we did is we started talking with the senior center and council on aging about how seniors, how they dealt with it. And so now, moving forward, we have this new thing we're doing. And so it could be very isolated, you know, associated with individual things, but to me, it's kind of one of those almost permanent goals, rather than a year-to-year goal, that is like, what's another way we can look at this? And although there was nothing hugely exciting in that area to me this year, and so I just marked it satisfactory, you know, I guess the way to get from satisfactory to commendable in my mind is to come up with some more specific ways of doing it at specific times, and then mentioning those to us so I can remember to include them in the evaluation. But it's not really a problem, it's just a, it's an opportunity place that we could continue to come up with good ways of doing it, because we've all seen it done kind of poorly. And that's okay, to not bother with suggestion boxes that are just kind of like, okay, I had a box, and you can put something in it. That's not really the kind of thing we're looking for. We're looking at trying to improve individual services, so it's cool.
Ms. Stein.
I'm thinking of the sheet we got on the new parking system. I'm thinking of the sheet we got on the new parking system, where we had specific complaints about how this part of it worked and that part of it worked and what was being done. Somehow, the complaints about the parking system must have gotten through and were being addressed point for point, which I thought was really good. So, I don't know. Somehow, the public's input on that must have been useful. And it was nice to see that service in particular addressed. So hopefully, you can gather more public opinion in some meaningful way for other services in town.
Okay. Ms. Hayden?
I want to revise and extend my remark. The reason I'm the other commendable is that, you know, I have a sense that the information is been made available. I want to recall the very extensive descriptions of the successes and failures and shortcomings that accompanied every budget item in the report. The reason that report is 160 pages long is because there is, is a half a page, a page, two lines on how effective that budget had been the year before at fulfilling the needs for, you know, whatever it was, that, that budget item, whether it was, well, I'm not going to go into any more detail than that. That, that document is extraordinary and has a ton of information. And if you have a penchant for numbers, you can sort of drill down not very far and realize, oh, yeah, look at this. The spending was adequate, the spending was not adequate, the spending is behind, the spending is ahead. So I mean, it's all out there, but it is maybe just a little bit diffuse. And, and maybe that's the discussion that we need to be having, how to make it less, more, more easily accessed.
Okay, so, so my goal here, you can see, this is why I'm not taking any liberties in trying to assume anybody means anything. My intent is to make sure that we do not unnecessarily ding him on something that we don't even know what we're talking about and that we don't fail to give him credit for something that we are all on the same page about. So I put this one firmly into the category of leave it as it is and work on further clarity to the degree that we need to for next year. But it doesn't require any further clarification, I don't think, in the review. Okay, and my last one, and so, so we talked about the October storm as part of this discussion a couple of ways. Some of us called out the October storm as a really important example of excellent crisis management. And so I'll say I was among them. Not all of us did, and because that was really such an extraordinary occurrence, if we mean to mark it that way, I want to make sure it gets included. So what are folks' thoughts about including the October storm and various references as an example of excellent crisis management? Ms. Brewer?
Well, speaking as someone who totally neglected to put it in her entire review, I would be thrilled if you would include that. And when I was not taking an extra two minutes to reread the draft evaluation memo after reading the other materials, it doesn't seem to appear in here. And I didn't know if that was because you were concerned that it wasn't on enough of the forms. And I wasn't sure necessarily which section to throw it into, but obviously, you can base that on whatever you want to, but including like whichever section, if it shows up under community and intergovernmental relations, whatever. Obviously, it wasn't a goal because we didn't know we were going to have a crisis. But I, I absolutely agree with all the comments that everybody made in terms of how well that went. And I mean, I made some offhand remark to the separate issue of when the town manager had to be away, and he had obviously set things up that things could go very well. And that probably, on a separate note, should be as acknowledged here as well. But most importantly, I really think the crisis management thing, I'm just, I just totally didn't see the obvious place to tuck it in. And so I forgot, frankly. So that's why it's really good when we work on it like this together, because that's, I want it in there.
The form really inspires different reactions from everybody in different places and, and different memories that you might have. And so some ways of dealing with the October storm talked about kind of the need for more communication or whatever. So sometimes it was mentioned in forms, but it wasn't specifically called out as, you know, excellent crisis management. So again, just because it was mentioned, I couldn't, I didn't want to take the leap to, to the judgment about it. Mr. Wald?
In the same vein, I mentioned that I hoped, in order to draw a balance, I think on, overall, we did very well. You know, we could have been hit a lot worse. I think the other thing is that we, and, and the town manager came in, I happened to be here one day myself in town hall, and he was in his office working for several hours despite the fact he had been on medical leave and so forth. I mean, so, and the rest of the team came in and pulled together very nicely. What I was trying to say is that we did a very good job. I think in some areas, we couldn't expect certain things, and some we could have, but we adapted along the way, too. So we got better and better as the thing happened. And in retrospect, though, we saw the things we could have done differently, whether it was social media or the use of the radio, things like that. So I was simply saying that there was feedback from the public asking for more or a different response, that we should heed that in, in the future, but we did well, I think, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hayden?
Yeah, I'm going to be in the yes column as well. The, the other part of it, besides the, the management at the moment, when the, during the emergent condition, is the follow-up. You know, crisis management is a, is a forward-looking activity as well as a lights-and-siren response. And I think that that's commendable. I mean, clearly, we've got lots, we've spent a lot of thought, a lot of effort put into mitigating. And unfortunately, it's always the last emergency that we're preparing for. Who knows what's coming? But if, if our ability to learn and think on our feet this time is any indication, I think we're doing okay.
Thank you. Ms. Stein?
I have it in my report.
Oh, good. So we're good, so we'll include it. Okay, good. And someone, maybe Ms. Brewer, just mentioned about the, how well things went in Mr. Musanti's absence, which is not currently included in there.
Is he gone?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so that will be added also.
Which almost sounds like, yeah, we didn't even notice he was gone. No way. That's not what we were trying to say. Yes, some cleverly worded mention of that would be helpful.
Okay, so that's the end of the things that I teased out and wanted to make sure we include. So now we will just go around the table and see what other folks want to include. So again, this is things that got mentioned in individual reports that you think weren't either included or fully captured in the draft, or essentially to advocate for things that maybe you were the only person who, who wrote it, but you want to, you want to try and get us to agree to include it. So we can start anywhere. Ms. Stein, would you like to start?
I'm sure. I am not going to sing aloud. I have a lot of specific little details in my report, but I don't think any of them need to be advocated for, for inclusion in the overall summary, because Mr. Musanti will see what I wrote. And I think he knows probably where I'm coming from on, on a couple of issues. And that's good enough for me. I, I think you have captured very well in this document the major areas, and that satisfies me.
Thank you. Ms. Brewer?
I have two things. One is hopefully very easy, and one is more complex. The very easy one is in the draft evaluation memo, if, which I hate to bring up even like a comma or something in this thing, because you worked so hard on all this. When we talk about the solar project in small letters, could we, for history's sake, since it's our first, but not certainly our last, refer to it as something more formal the first time we mention it, probably under, right here? But, you know, solar farm at close landfill at such-and-such address, and then later solar farm, because we're going to have lots more going on. But this being our first huge project, I'd like that to be really clear in this evaluation so that five years from now, when people are looking back at our glorious solar history, they'll know exactly which project we were talking about. So hopefully, that's an easy one. And the more complicated one is, and I was just so excited that you decided not to touch on this one. Question 20, goal number five. So that's the other assessment, not the building assessment, not the assessment that's not the budget detail, but the other thing. Shall conduct an assessment of the town's human resources needs and capabilities. Okay, so to try and make a long story short, reading over everybody's answers, I don't think you answered the question the same way I did. And I disagree with you in this particular case in that all the good stuff about new hires goes in other sections. The point is, the assessment has not taken place. And if we think that doesn't matter, I guess we could write that down. Like, I always thought that was a stupid goal, and we don't need it anyway. But to me, although of course, we aren't there yet, because we just got a new HR director, the assessment still needs to take place. We don't know of any idea how well we're recruiting, hiring, retaining, and supporting town staff in terms of our alignment with best practices. So I don't see how we could conceivably consider that to be commendable. I'm totally flummoxed by those answers. So I see the comments that support the great hires and great progress and the sensitivity issue, which I think was also important, that I didn't bother to mention on mine for whatever reason. I think those were all really good. I just think that the answers don't support the rating on 20, which is goal number five, which I marked as needs improvement. And I think either needs improvement or unable to judge are much more accurate answers than anything else for that goal because of the specificity of that goal. So there's my thing.
Anyone want to comment? I'll comment on, so there's been a dramatic change in the human resources department and the, the goals and vision for it. I wouldn't want to have that go unappreciated. And that seemed like a step towards, even though it wasn't the formal assessment itself, it was understanding what the select board's goal with the, intention with the goal was. So I was happy, in fact, it was funny, because when we talked about the goals for next year, I said, we don't need this one anymore, right? Like, because human resources, and everybody said, no, no, we still need it because we still want the assessment. I said, okay. But because there's been such a, a change there, I wanted to make sure that that was acknowledged. So I had put it in, because I think that we did all say, those of us who put it as commendable, noted that it was a, a step indicating the, the progress that we were looking for already there. So that was how I felt about it. Other folks? First, we get to hear from other people. Mr. Hayden?
Well, the, the, the reason that I'm the sole unable to judge is that, is for that very reason, there's been significant progress, which is noted in question number 17, recruiting and assigning best available personality, not person, personalities, personnel in their company. I mean, that's, that's, I think we're, we're almost unanimous in, well, we're unanimous in it being satisfactory or better. The, and while that action, the action of getting, you know, Ms. Radway here and sort of the, the reassignments that, that kind of filtered around that, you know, don't rise to the level of my being able to, to judge that the task is complete, is because it isn't. It didn't, you know, that, those are an important first step. I think we should all understand that and acknowledge it. But, so, you know, I'm thinking unable to judge is maybe the most honest way. It's not unsatisfactory, it's not, it just isn't. Beyond, and, and I do think this is important to be said, beyond the observation that it is happening sort of at an informal level. Things are beginning to, you know, staffing's beginning to be, it's much, I think, much better understood that where it's, what's needed, who's needed, what skill set, what tools are needed in each spot is much, recently is much better understood than when I first joined the select board.
Thank you. Mr. Wald?
I think you adequately expressed the reasons for my commendable rating there. Having heard Ms. Brewer, I can, in several cases I put down, it was a judgment call, and I could go either way. And having heard Ms. Brewer's comments, I could see why I might have gone more toward the middle than to the commendable. But I think all of us were trying to capture that positive change that had taken place there. I also think that's what's useful about the process. You know, when you have a kind of disjunction or contrast in responses, that's not, you know, as you said, the individual responses aren't the evaluation, it's the collective conversation. So to me, this is where, the process has worked well. There were a bunch of commendables, there was Ms. Brewer's needs improvement. We're having a conversation about it now, and the pros will capture things in a way this little, simple check-off grid can. So I'm satisfied with a description along the lines of the conversation we're having. Again, clarifying things for next year's goal in the process.
Ms. Stein?
I did say that this is a good step forward, my exact words, the hire of the new human, of Ms. Radway. I also mentioned the fact that Mr. Musanti is gathering data on staff salaries across a bigger universe so that people in town can see how they compare. And I think that this is another important step that will help with some of the complaints that we've had about salary compensation and other human resource issues, so.
Okay, so I think that what I'm hearing is that basically, we're all comfortable with the rating that we put. But rather than calling it out as that rating, I can talk about, as I did for another one, saying how kind of the ratings were all over the place. I can say the reasonings were all over the place, but, you know, that there's agreement that this is, this is not yet fulfilled, but is still pending, but that all, we appreciate all the, the positive signs in relation to the human resources development or whatever. But I, I just won't, I won't emphasize what the current rating is because the rating, as we're saying, is, is not fully capturing what we, what we want to express as the status of the fulfillment of that goal. Ms. Stein?
I was thinking that you might want to say something like, we are at a great place. We have really moved forward, and that next year, we will be able to have a more complete evaluation or whatever the phrase ecology was here, assessment. But we have moved significantly forward this year.
Do you think that's kind of capturing what I said, is kind of capturing what you're looking for for a change?
Close. The reason I, the reason I'm concerned about, and I really don't think we're talking about different things at all. What we're talking about, the difference between, which you've just addressed in what you said, is we cannot, we could not, as things stood, have a goal that said HR assessment is 75% commendable, because the HR assessment's not done. So you can't do a commendable on something that doesn't exist. If you don't feel like, you know, all these other questions about personnel and recommendations, starting with questions 14 through 18, capture how much things have gotten better, then I appreciate that it needs to be reflected somewhere, but I don't think that was the right, the right way to reflect that goal. So I'm totally okay with the fact that if we just take that out, as, you know, when we have the goal 1, 2, 5, 6, and 8, if you just take 3 out of the list and characterize the way you just did. Because it's not that I'm arguing that anything's bad in HR, by any stretch of imagination, it's morales times. It's that I just don't want us to say, like was said earlier, we don't need to do this anymore. Oh, wait, we still need to do this in a big way, because we still need to do the assessment, but it can't be done tomorrow, the person just started. We've got lots to do in terms of the big picture, but now we actually have a hope of doing it, whereas when we started this goal, it didn't seem possible. So I'm very excited about the potential as well. Nothing in what I was trying to say is negative. I just, it was one of the places where our disagreement as to how we interpreted the question and where to make sure the right credit got placed for good accomplishments worked out. So I think if you want to just carry it in the text and just pull it out of that list, I think it sounds perfect.
Ms. Hayden?
I would, I would just, just point out that with, with the new arithmetic, since there are now five of us who've weighed in, this would fall into the other category anyway, because it'd be 60, 0, 20, 0, 20.
Let's just leave it out of that.
That's one thing, and, and also, just, just sort of an underlying sense that I want to, it's, one of the things that I noticed about our form here, and so this is maybe looking ahead, is that some, some things we're, we're rating the thing, a report, a list, an assessment, whatever. And sometimes we are rating the, the quality of, of, of the effort that has gone into that. And I found myself not able to differentiate between those, but maybe more that, a little bit like. in a little bit later.
Yeah, so, you know, we can and should and will continue to refine our goals as we deal with those. I, and I said this when we talked about the forms, as we were reviewing and approving the forms to use this year, that actually because of how this works, I don't think that we should obsess too much on any particular question within the form because what it does is it makes for a very broader, what's the right analogy, a very, uh, it, it, it becomes a funnel that widely captures through the different questions, through the different interpretations. It, it captures and teases out lots of different things that we think about. So I'll tell you that from, from what I have to do with this, it makes it very difficult. I can't just look at, you know, number 14 and say, "Yep, nobody, nobody said X, Y, or Z in number 14." Well, because some of us might have said it in 13 or 12 or 14, you know, so.
Exactly. We said it different places.
Exactly. But it is still all being captured by the form. So, so that's why, the performance goals are a different matter. We should be extremely clear with what our intentions are for the, for the performance goals as we keep going forward with them. But, but in general, on the form, whether we, whether some of us captured one feeling in line 12 and another in, in 18, I, I don't think that matters as long as it was captured. Ms. Hayden?
Which brings me to a, a, a general comment on the, um, the questionnaires that we received back. I just wanted, um, to, to reiterate my appreciation as well for the information that they got. And I want to be doubly thankful for the comments when, when actual comments were written down, sort of for the same reason that you can assimilate and figure out what the answer is, when the comments are written down, that helped me understand better everything else around it.
Okay. Ms. Brewer, were you done with things you wanted to have included or changed? Do you have any more?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden, anything?
I, I just wanted to, to give as an example, um, my dilemma about, you know, the effort versus the outcome, um, under, under, um, economic development, for instance. You know, I, 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 it's, it's, it's one question and I put four checkmarks into it, two of one and two of the other. And, um, I, I'm going to enjoy how the arithmetic on that works out. I see some, some odd percentages, so I think you've got a system pretty well established. But, um, the thing that I understood as I contemplated that question is that, um, part of the success of particularly this, this goal involves much broader market forces than, um, we can expect Mr. Musanti, even in his godlike aura, to be able to control. So, um, I realized, geez, you know, we don't have a, a new multimillion dollar tax, taxable asset in town. Is that his fault? Even though clearly we've, we've tasked him with, with developing that. I don't think so.
So are you looking to have a change with anything that's in the, about that?
No, not, not this year. I think that, what I'm, what I'm trying to, to, to lay the groundwork for is your understanding of why I marked it the way I did, so that when you make your comments, you can have that to, to assimilate.
Okay.
Um, but also to prompt my colleagues as we have our discussion about the 2014 goals, we might have a little thinking about that as well.
Okay. And since you mentioned the, uh, the dividing up and the math that's involved, so, um, some of us give one answer to every question and some of us give multiple answers to every question, and, and some of them are multi-part questions, so that makes perfect sense. And, uh, and, and we're all, again, we're all going to approach this differently. So what I've done is when there were four sets of responses, then each of us were worth 25% in that. And, and if somebody divided up their answer, that was also divided up as well. So I think that was well captured in the, uh, in the composite, if you looked at the composite form, so.
Yes, I, I agree.
So it, so, you know, feel free to do that. It's a perfectly fine way to do it. We should all, we should all react to the form however we do, you know, and then it's just kind of, you know, my problem.
I, I think it's clear, and, and now that, that all of us have weighed in, a four-part answer now is five points each.
Makes the math.
Yeah, makes it so easy.
Okay.
The six and a half percent stuff.
All right. So anything else you wanted to change, make sure got included or nuanced in the memo?
Uh, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Wall?
Uh, I think you, you captured everything very well, especially given the complexity of the form and our responses. The only slight question I had is about, you know, evaluation process information because, again, there's, I mean, here there are five of us who spend our time doing this every two weeks or sometimes every week, and we have conversations and we're discussing the results. In the case of other things, we have mostly pros' letters from the public, under three dozen, and about the same number, even fewer, from town staff, uh, you know, barely 10%. And so I think it's useful that you indicate here that low response level and the maybe difficulty of interpreting some of those responses because it's hard to know how to react. And Ms. Brewer, I think, made a very good comment in her, uh, final remarks about maybe the need for better forms or better feedback mechanisms because clearly there are certain, there's a kind of a disjuncture between generally very strong staff satisfaction and a pocket of less satisfied opinion, but it's very hard for us to assess at this distance.
Indeed. Okay. So, uh, so you're not looking for any particular change about that?
I just wasn't sure whether you're going to, if the evaluation process information is really going to become part of the report or is that's background?
Everything that you see there is the draft memo, so.
Okay, so that is going to stay.
Yeah, so you want that in there? You want it different or?
No, I think it's useful to have it there.
Okay. Okay.
It was, you know, it's an agreed upon during discussions, I was going to make sure the numbers stayed in there.
Okay. Yep. All right. Um, so then I think that's everything unless people have thought of new things. I started with you, right? I'm not leaving you off. Okay. So everybody has gotten to comment on things that they want to add to, subtract from, revise in the memo. Okay. I think that I can capture all of these things.
We're counting on you.
Again, thank you very much for, for approaching this so thoughtfully and so carefully, and, and the reason this is so difficult for us to do is because we put so much effort into it. It is an inexact science, and the memo I say it's more than art than science, and it surely is. It's very important. We're doing better with it all the time and, uh, and I, I feel very good about the, the final result that we get from it. Um, and again, for folks who are watching at home, what we were talking about, we spent the majority of the night talking about was making sure we got things included or not included. You might get a misimpression that this was about, uh, about problems when in fact that the evaluation itself is overwhelmingly positive. Um, the Select Board, the community, and staff are all extremely supportive of Mr. Musanti, appreciative of his, his tremendous work, uh, on behalf of Amherst. And, uh, and it, this is a good opportunity to be able to tell you that and how much we value it. So, thank you very much. Before we finish this part of everything, is there anything that you would like to comment on or ask questions about or clarify?
Uh, no, just, uh, I'll say again how much I'm, uh, enjoying the work and the challenges that come with the job every day, and I'm blessed to have such a talented staff at all levels. And I very much appreciate the, uh, individual feedback from staff and from board members as well as the collective feedback. So I'm looking forward to next Monday.
Thank you very much. So next Monday, so I'm going to turn this into a formal memo, what's currently a draft will not be a draft anymore, um, and, uh, and basically you just trust me on it. If you, if, if, when I submit it next Monday to you all and we vote to formally approve it, if you're not ready to approve it because you think that I haven't captured it, then we'll just wait another amount of time. But, uh, but it's not going to be dramatically different from what it says now, and it will just incorporate what we've talked about. Ms. Stein?
Is there any chance that you could send it to us ahead of time so that we can come in prepared to say, "We think it's wonderful," or "I would change line three and put a comma in there"?
Not that you would ever do that.
I would.
I'll tell you what, go easy on the editing because this takes me so much time and there's just, you'd have to pick your battles because at some point I'm just going to go, "Oh, yeah." I'm just warning you, if I lose it on this, that's why. But certainly, I think that because this is all reflecting a conversation that we've had in public, we're not now influencing each other outside of meetings. Um, I think I certainly can do that. So what I will do is hopefully, I'll try and circulate a draft in advance of the packet deadline so that we can come up with, uh, hopefully the final version for the packet deadline. I think that's perfectly legitimate.
That would be great. Okay. Ms. Hayden?
I just wanted to add to your list of appreciations, appreciation for you keeping us, uh, steering us clear from the, the booby traps in the open meeting law. Something as valuable, as important, it's frustrating as heck. I just want to point that out. I did, not to be able to, to, to sort of think out loud with colleagues beforehand, but, um, the, uh, because it's so important, you know, I, I appreciate that, you know, we're doing it right so that it will stick.
Thank you. All right. Anything else, Ms. Brewer?
I know we're all tired and I just feel desperate to say this, so if you give me just a minute, it'd be awesome. Um, I realize that we will have a separate conversation after we are finished with the August 27th, saying, "Okay, moving forward, what are we going to do differently, um, next time around, not only the FY13 goals, which is the ongoing conversation, but also the possibility of the blah, blah, blah that Alyssa put at the end of her thing associated with the staff questionnaires and how we could do better," which is something we talk about every year, which is why we tweaked them this year. So I know that's upcoming, so no, I'm not talking about this now. What I'm talking about right now is just a couple more process questions while, comments while it's still all fresh, is that, yes, Ms. O'Keefe, again, needs credit for doing an amazing job, seeing all these five different people, five different people, turning their stuff in, um, is like amazing. And the fact that we not only interpret, I mean, every question is like we all interpreted it a different way, and you're trying to figure out, well, did he say it in 11 or 13 or whatever, and does it all mean the same thing? We got people putting Xs in two or three different places, we got multiple questions within boxes, I mean, like everybody's, this is the way you fill out a form, interpretation is different. And so for you to try and compound into one, yeah, I, like, whatever you want to write is fine with me because I am no longer willing to complain about any of that because it's crazy. The other thing, um, is associated with that is that I want to make sure it's clear to people that with the unfortunately relatively low amount of public feedback we got both from the public, public and the staff, um, is that one of the things we've made a point of doing in this process for the last several years, and I know it's sometimes done differently other places, is that each member of this board gets to interpret that information, again, their own way. We all get the original documents associated with that, and then we filter them through our own brains as to what we thought people meant. And so I have seen it done other places otherwise where they say, "Well, here, you know, here you, Bill, you look at all the staff input and you tell me what that says, and then that gets incorporated into the larger thing." No, it's that we're all also interpreting that. So I want the public to recognize and the staff to recognize that we are all giving our own special filter to that before we get it to Ms. O'Keefe. But at this point, that seems like the thoroughly right way to do it as well, but it is, again, being looked at through several different sets of eyes, so maybe you like that. And associated with open meeting law interpretation, having discussed these sorts of things at some length with some of the open meeting law people at the AGO's office, I think that the basic rule of if an opinion is expressed, you can't send something out ahead of time is ludicrous. I have told them that, and they understand that, except they don't know how, where to draw a line between different kinds of reports that people might make. And so that's one of the ongoing problems with it. And so it comes out with this bold statement of no opinion, it's like, pf, that makes no sense to all of us doing this work every day, but the reality is they don't know where to say not to. Given that, however, I feel that we are, I am like, I'm supremely proud and confident of our process here. I am confident that we are way heads above everyone else in terms of what gets released to the public, in terms of our individual information that's provided, our individual ratings. We don't just have someone sitting here trying to make notes while we're just blah, blah, blah to each other, we're actually filling out forms, taking responsibility for our own ratings. I think we should be very proud of that. It's been a long time coming to the point where we are right here, and it's not without thought and a lot of hard work, especially on your part, that we've gotten to this point. So we should feel really good about this.
Thank you. I, I absolutely agree. There are, you know, I learn at MMA, I learn through consultation with other, um, colleagues in, in towns around ours. All kinds of ways people don't do, are unable to do, do badly stumble over performance evaluations, and, uh, and that's because it's hard. It's very hard. But, uh, but I, as Ms. Brewer said, I think we're doing a truly excellent job with it. Again, I think we're so, we're so thoughtful and, and careful in it, and, uh, and I think that the transparency and accountability of the process is just critical, and, and I'm really proud of where we are with that. So, thank you all very much. Okay. Um, so then the other thing we need to do is we need to make a motion, and then I want to do a quick calendar preview, and then we can leave. Ms. Stein?
I move that the Select Board approve a special wine and malt license for hurricane boosters for service at a golf outing slash dinner to be held on the grounds of the Hickory Ridge Golf Club, Monday, August 27, 2012, from 12:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Karen Dunn, manager?
Okay. Ms. Hayden?
I don't know what her, it's just kind of tacked on there. Let's see if we can figure it out.
Applicant?
Second.
Applicant.
Yeah, Golf Committee Chair.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Hayden has seconded it. Further discussion, Mr. Hayden?
Just a very quick, um, appreciation for, um, this is, this is boosting a high school organization, so it's possible there'll be high schoolers around. I really appreciate the, uh, the controls that were described to us as far as making sure people who may are allowed to access the alcohol will have access and those who aren't will not.
I'll also note appreciation for Ms. Russell. This was actually a complicated special liquor license application. Usually they're very easy, but, um, because Hickory Ridge has an existing liquor license but has since changed ownership, that license is no longer valid, and yet since it hasn't been rescinded and blah, blah, blah. So there was a whole big thing that, uh, she had to go through with the state to make sure this could be done and the way that it's being done is, is fully legal and, and going along with all of the requirements. So, uh, so this was not just a run-of-the-mill one that came in and we approve it, there's a lot of work behind this to make sure it was all accurate. So, thanks to Ms. Russell. Uh, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Okay, I just want to do a quick calendar preview for you before we go. Um, obviously, we have not met in a very long time, so we have a whole bunch of things on our agenda for next week. We have, uh, and those are listed on the calendar preview at the end, but I just want to call your attention to a couple of things. We have three different public hearings, two different poll hearings for Western Mass Electric, as well as the public hearing on the parking policy changes. The parking policy hearing is going to be at 7:30. Obviously, the public hearings all had to have their, their times, uh, noticed early, so the Western Mass Electric ones are 6:45 and 6:50, and then the parking changes, one is at 7:30. Also, next week, we will be talking about plans to fill the library trustee vacancy. You all saw in the paper that there has been a vacancy there. Um, we have been notified by the library trustees about that. I have been in coordination with Mr. Sarat, the, uh, president of the library trustees, about this process and how it would work, what the timing would be. He, in consultation with his colleagues, requested that we do this at the September 24th Select Board meeting, um, so we will be discussing that next week, but I wanted to get that kind of on your radar, that that is what the, that is what the expectation is. It's not official until we approve it, but, uh, in, in case you had any issues or thoughts about it, I wanted to just get you thinking about that now. Um, I think that is all I have to note about the calendar preview. There are a bunch of other things that, that don't rise to the level of being listed on here, all kinds of updates and whatevers that are going to happen there, but these are the things that, that the public would be most interested in and that, um, you all needed to be aware of. I'm sorry, what did you say?
I'm sorry. I, um, there will be three committee appointments. We need to fill a committee for complicated reasons for love pause.
Okay. Yep, there will be, I'm sure there will be, uh, a bunch of other things that don't quite make, uh, being listed on, on this section of the agenda ahead of time. But a plan for basically a busy, long meeting next time, and, uh, and then we won't meet again until after Labor Day. Mr. Hayden?
How confident are we that the Western Mass Electric will be ready for the Sunderland Road hearing?
Um, I believe that all of their stuff is all set. It all went out, the mailings happened on Friday, so, uh, they were already set with all of their arrangements. It was a question of whether they could get the coordination through their home office and the Verizon office in order to get the, uh, a butter notification sent out in time, and that, that did happen.
Good, thank you.
Yep, that looks good.
Particularly anxious for that one to succeed.
Yes. Um, okay. Any questions about anything on the calendar preview?